Today, there's going to be a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board for the city of Lake Butler, today's date is October 19, 2021, the time is 6:00 PM. Commissioner Servin appears to be missing, Commissioner Redmond.
Here.
Commissioner Basely. Here, City Manager. Yes, sir. City Attorney. Here. And myself, Mayor. Here. Commissioner Stigel's here. The effigy on my. First thing on the agenda is property rights settlement and comprehensive plan. So, Mayor, there's a resolution that we need to pass that really affects the recent change in Florida statutes. And that's about really all that it does. But also, before we can do anything with the property that we want to annex and rezone, we have to have this approved. That's right. There can't be any comprehensive plan amendments at all. It's completely approved.
Oh, okay.
And that resolution, I guess, is being identified under number I of the Tuesday. And that would be resolution number two, ZLPA, CPA, twenty-one dash zero one. Discussion?
Apparently, we have to do it well to proceed on, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not that it's something we can't, you know, we can't lean on.
It's not even controversial, to be honest with you.
Oh, okay. I mean, you know, so.
It basically enumerate certain statutory factors of protection of the property of the will be accorded. But I've never heard the suggestion ever from any board anywhere. It would have been a mistake to take this law to give it. But it's a thing that was necessary to me, but it's essential for us to do it.
Oh, okay.
And you are confident.
Well, you need a motion?
No, sir.
Okay, I make a motion that, what is it? Resolution number PL, excuse me, EZ slash LPA CPA twenty-one dash oh one. Make a motion that that amendment for the comprehensive plan for by title on.
Okay. Do you record? Your motion is to adopt that resolution.
To adopt it?
Resolution or read by title on?
Correct.
Okay. Resolution number EZ slash LPA CPA twenty-one dash zero one. A resolution of the City Commission of the city of Lake Butler, Florida, serving as the Planning and Zoning Board of the city of Lake Butler, Florida, and the local planning agency of the city of Lake Butler, Florida, recommending to the City Commission of the city of Lake Butler, Florida, approval of an amendment to the text of the city of Lake Butler Comprehensive Plan pursuant to an application by the City Commission under the amendment procedures established in section one six three point three three one six one, three one six three point three two four eight Florida statute as amended, providing for adding a property rights element to the comprehensive plan per section one six three point three one six one sub ten Florida statutes as amended and section one eighty seven point one zero one sub three Florida statutes as amended, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing effective aid. Would you say?
Yes.
All in favor?
Ah.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Is a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that adjourn the planning zone for.
Jane? All in favor?
Ah.
That is. A real deal. It's going to be a regular meeting of the City Commission of the city of Lake Butler, today's date is October nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, the time is six out of four PM. If you're all with us. If you don't follow. Commissioner Servin is not here this evening. Commissioner Stigel is not here this evening. Commissioner Redmond.
Here.
Commissioner Basely. Here. City Manager. City Attorney. Here. And myself, Mayor, are here. If you would, please stand for a note of prayer in place of believing.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act in character and conviction. Help us to visit with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Help, give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders for your people. And finally, our Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of help to build a community worthy of the human clergy. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag, the United States of America, the United Republic of which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is approval of the new department. Need approval to, to, oh, man.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda format. Okay. I hear you, brother.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For seven to four statute, members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to refer to the proposition before the City Commission. Upon recognition by the mayor, the commission may address the City Commission on any subject either included on the agenda or any other subject. Speakers are requested to approach the podium and give their name and address to the City Court to be reflected in the minutes of the meeting. Marks are limited up to four minutes. Additional time is needed if the City Commission under any time needed. Comments are to be directed only to the mayor, he or she will determine if staff will need to interact. This is time for the public discussion on any subject on or off the agenda. The remainder of the meeting is for the commission's interaction and decision-making. City Commission wishes to maintain normal conduct across the court in a public meeting to thank you for your time and attention. Good sir.
I apologize for being late.
You need to step up here and identify yourself and tell us where you're from.
My first name's Reynolds, Mayor. I'm one of the founders of a company called Mary Hike. So we've got a submarine over Lake there, doing some testing on it. I just ran through the water, apologize. My wife's got a ton of things and she came out and reported on that. Co-founder is Mary Phillyall, Mayor. Daughter of Daisy Phillyall, who's some of the. I'm not sure why we were put on schedule today or what the topic was, but I'm assuming that it was due to crowded parking or something, Saturday. And at any rate, that was totally my responsibility and my fault. I was assuming that after Labor Day. Got that one wrong. God willing, well, yes. I was assuming after Labor Day that the boat wouldn't be so crowded. So since we're working on limited manpower and the guys that I have supporting us doing this, it's more easy to have them there during the weekend because everybody's working. And so, so it showed up Friday, there were two or three cars there. And Saturday, you know, when we went out to do our test, you know, there weren't hardly that many people there. And evidently, while we were out there trying to get the boat underneath the water, there were some events scheduled that we just weren't aware of. And so, for having that part not crowded, I apologize. I was just working under the assumption, you know, that it was going to be a slow time here. I'm not sure if everybody realizes what we're trying to do, but, you know, right now, the Hypercell is one technology that's been targeted as the premier technology that can help what countries overseas because of the pandemic is so aggressive in the South County. And right now, we've got three different governments asking us to get this boat ready to demo so that we can, so that they can use this piece of equipment to help them with kind of aggression in the South County. And that sounds like a big thing, but that's literally what we're doing. And so, if we can get the boat through this round of tests and stuff like that, we've got multiple special forces governments who are going to come and see it. And so, we're a small group, underfunded group. We don't have all the people we need. We don't always make the right choices in the decision, but we're just trying to get the boat through testing so that we can get this piece of equipment to America's allies overseas who need it. I'm not sure if you guys know, the Secretary of the Navy's been on this boat and kind of behind us on the board and folks like that. And if it's successful, what we're doing will be able to build, you know, this equipment here. And we in county will be able to provide this. So if the reason for us being slated on this meeting was to correct my mistake and crowding that part in my, I apologize. And if I can find out just who to call before we ever take it out there, we know it's a privilege.
You call me and we'll let it pay for the schedule.
Okay. And, you know, I was, for some reason, I was just thinking about votes and voting season. I wasn't thinking about the community center itself being voted for. So it was my fault. So if after this, I could give you your phone and all that, I'll call you personally for a random testing. Please accept our apologies for any objection or policy.
Well, here's something I just. The semi trailer, it's a boat trailer. We've got a boat trailer parked in there to the side. It doesn't interfere with the sand parking along the field.
Right.
If there be any problem with putting motorhome, there's a, on the west side of that field, there's a paved road that goes all the way down into the water. Used to be a duck. They've been trying to open the motorhome on that, on that.
At the side of the restaurant?
No, no, on the opposite, the west side. If you're facing the lake.
Right.
It's to your left. There's a, there's a paved road.
It's not across that field. There's that patch of field and then another city street that goes down to the work. But all to the.
If you all could put the motorhome over there, it would never interfere with anything we have going on in the park.
Right.
Because unfortunately, the community center, the community center certainly better than I can. Nothing gets booked almost every week.
And I love it. The main thing with that is us being a county, we've got over sixty million dollars of, you know, it's quite a hundred and some people in the county, among them is invested in the project. Keeping an eye on it and getting a check system periodically to the board for the minus while we try to have it right there. But if during the weekdays, it's not, maybe pull it up in one of those slots where it's not blocking that. But if I could discuss that with you, the lake, the water level now is getting shallow enough to where I'm not even sure we can put it back in there now. We're going to have to move on there. We've been fighting hard to, for this to be a matter of pride for the county. We've been, I brought some books. We've been featured as the future of naval special warfare. We've been a cloud customer of books. We've been deemed one of the innovative technologies. And quite honestly, every time I see the Go Daddy sign over there, this is home ground testing of Go Daddy, one of our goals is to test the ground part of it. But yes, sir, we'll do anything we can. We know it's a boat to be there.
Yeah, well, we'd like to work with you in the way that we can. But we've got a whole lot of people that.
Oh, sure, certainly. And I certainly don't need to jam things up with the boat.
I appreciate you coming in.
Much, except our apologies.
Thank you. The consent agenda. I had a question about the dog report that I got an answer for the panel dog report because there wasn't any dogs in the session.
Okay. All right, there's no more discussion. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Approve it and act upon it with one motion.
Jane? All in favor?
Yes.
All in favor? I don't have a two financial reporting for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Mayor, Commissioner, the financial reports come in October one, twenty twenty, June thirty, twenty twenty-one, represents the full fiscal year results and that all funds have finished the year halfway within the plan with revenue exceeding on expenditure to each of the venture funds. Finalization of the fiscal year is kind of a third year from when it's expected to perform over the next five to six years. Questions?
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the financial report.
I'm making.
Wait.
Go ahead.
I make a motion. This is the year twenty twenty-one.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Purchase of a zero term law. Or the state of the court.
I think. Oh, yeah, there's ordinance.
Yes. Yeah.
Sure.
Sure did. So that's good. Okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. This is the first reading of the ordinance that we're talking about in the planning zone meeting. We just have to approve the first reading now and then it goes on to the state. And then it comes back and be settled for the second reading.
This is the ordinance that the planning board recommended to the commission.
Will this be the first reading, correct?
First reading, correct.
Okay. All right. If you don't have any more discussion, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven by prior order.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eleven, the ordinance of the city of Lake Butler, Florida, related to an amendment of the text of the city of Lake Butler Comprehensive Plan pursuant to an application, three three one dash zero one, by the City Commission under the amendment procedures established in section one six three point three one six one, three one six three point three two four eight Florida statute as amended, providing for adding a property rights element to the comprehensive plan per section one six three point three one six one sub eight Florida statutes as amended and section one eighty seven point one zero one sub three Florida statutes as amended, providing severability, repealing all ordinance in conflict and providing effective aid.
Amendment? Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
We have a budget adjustment for the year twenty twenty-one. So, Mayor, the fiscal year is concluded and we're wrapping all that up. And so, what you have is just a detailed line, I don't know, of all the budget entries that are either over or under. And so, we're just putting all that in line so that we get ready for the audit. So we're just asking for your approval. Those adjustments to the, to the, based on activity.
Right. No, it's there. Lot on, it said, at the end of the year, it wasn't needed to move it. You know, the fact. It's the same. I make a, there's nothing else to discuss. I make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget adjustment.
Jane? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Waste collection. Yes. Now we have our illustrious waste collection contract ready to be discussed. None other than Skip McCall.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate that. Well, good evening, Mayor, and fellow commissioners, and City Manager, City Attorney. For the record, my name is Skip McCall with GFL Environmental. So you have here tonight, we have before you our three-year proposal to renew our contract or extend our contract for additional three-year terms. And it's consistent with the current agreement that we actually struck in two thousand sixteen. So I'm happy to say, again, that's coming before you tonight with no, no any kind of adjustments or increases to the residential rate. This will be the actual second term that we've been able to propose to renew this contract with no adjustments to the residential rate itself. So residents of the city of Lake Butler have been enjoying the past six years, no increase. And we're going to propose the same thing as the moving forward with this renewal. We have a little slight increase that we did for the commercial folks, but other than that, everything stays status quo. No adjustments to the, you know, to the contract itself. That's it. It was agreed on done in two thousand sixteen. And with that, if you guys have any questions that I can answer, I would be glad to do so. And I just want to say, on behalf of GFL, of course, it was WCA when we first started this journey with you folks. But on behalf of GFL now, we are excited to be, you know, have a good public partnership with the city of Lake Butler. You guys have been very supportive of our efforts, even though they've been very challenging this past year with the pandemic and everything that's been going on. So you guys have been great to work with. Appreciate your patience as we've gone through these unprecedented, unprecedented times. And, you know, again, we look forward to another renewal term with you folks. And hopefully, the city of Lake Butler will take a look at that and vote favorably for that, so.
The only question I have is additional, what kind of extension could we draw from the question?
So how we quantify it, it's basically like fifty cents a yard. So if you have like a two yard, it's basically fifty cents on those smaller containers. It's a kind of a nominal approach and it just gives us a little bit of security over the three years. Just keep in mind for this renewal term, again, that residential rate will be locked in for those three years. Again, so effectively, you could look at this being a nine-year contract, no adjustment to the residential rate, which I'll tell you is kind of someone I've heard of with everything going on, the inflation and everything else. So it's been something that our company looked at and being able to provide that, it's something that I'm proud of, so.
Especially fuel cost. Exactly.
What is the average cost now for the commercial, everything?
Average?
Mm-hmm.
So like for two, or six and eight, I would say on a monthly basis, with a combination of those three, it's probably somewhere on average around a hundred and twenty dollars a month, you're going to say? I mean, again, off the top of my head, just trying to do an estimation.
Yeah. The other thing the contract says is that we're not going to give the fly by the logic of that contribution.
Correct.
Yes, we give that up for.
Correct. So we did a little bit of an adjustment, but yes, again, we were able to negotiate that with Mr. Walker as far as that, any kind donation.
And any benefits are red.
Correct.
So you have a choice. You can either accept the three-year extension or go up for bids. What happens in the market? Most likely to be higher.
Yeah. A lot of the. All of them.
Go ahead.
I can just report to you that I've been involved in three bids this past year. And all three bids that I've been involved in, they've been thirty to forty percent higher than what's actually been proposed for renewal. And it's just due to, again, higher inflation. We, as an industry, we've all had to raise our raises, drivers, and all that adds up to, it's just more costly to do business now than it was even six, eight months ago.
Just not surprised you loved it, loved it.
Hey, I was surprised when it came down from above down to me because I don't make this, just when it comes to that regard. But I was happily surprised if we were able to at least pass that along to the city as well for our.
I make a motion to approve the three-year extension GFL contract.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your support.
Thanks, Skip. We're going to do another three years.
You got my notes.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is purchase of a zero term law. This is a piece of equipment that we use often in public works where we mow a lot of grass. And so, this is a heavy-duty lawnmower. We have three thousand dollars budgeted. We just need to adjust that. We need to adjust the budget.
Yeah, you have ten thousand.
We have ten acres and we've got to.
Okay, so we.
It's just a lawnmower more than three thousand.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to buy one.
Yeah. So we recommend that we purchase this zero term law. We're trying to be consistent with all of our lawnmowers, so. Put them over periodically.
So is this going to be two motion or one? So you got two, the motion to approve the three thousand adjustment budget and then a motion to approve the purchase.
You can put it all under one if you'd like.
One, right?
Yes. Both of them have to be in there.
Okay. All right, so I make a motion that we approve the three thousand budget adjustment and a motion to purchase the zero term mo, more from the ten liter engine for the twelve thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents.
What kind of more is?
Hustler.
A lean drum?
Yes, a brand. It's a hustler.
Oh, okay.
One. No, just a hustler, super lean.
What I mean.
Uh-huh.
That's I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, what you have, I also have one.
No, yeah.
Go ahead.
Heard that brand.
City of Gainesville, this is actually what they use. That makes you feel any better. On the front.
I'm just one on the board. I'd like to see this with, you know, next year. Or two, or whatever, up to maybe the equipment we got. They saw it was pretty bad.
And I think that's what we've been doing pretty good though lately.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to get the equipment that they need, yes. Not just the more, but all kind of equipment. I think that's a good thing. I can tell that it's a morale booster for personnel too, that they got what they need to do the job without making it hard.
Yeah. The guys have really enjoyed.
Yeah.
Doing great.
Well, it's the, it's the efficiency of having reliable equipment instead of buying something that somebody else got rid of for obvious reasons. You know, from being privy to some conversation, thousands of dollars, they're getting harder to find and they get cheaper because of everything else that's going on there in town. So my options are becoming one more limited.
Well, you're talking several weeks on all those income. Lawn mower and lot, no matter, you could buy a Holden or a hustler. You know, it's taking weeks to get.
We have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is the historical preservation board. So, Mayor, we're looking for five members for the historical preservation board and list them. Now, these are, they've been approached and said they might be interested leading the list to, of course, the mayor. We've got, we've got their other three, four, six, seven.
Does it have to be a five member or can it be more?
It's got to be five.
Only five, it'll be five.
Just in order.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be five and.
So we need to, we got the mayor on here and then we need to pick four more.
True. Well, and two, I'd like to revoke the discussion since there are more than five that have been correctioned. So I would like to participate. I would have to demonstrate if I wasn't on there. be devastated if, if I wasn't on there, if, if that would be the board's pleasure, only because through this process, there are those kind of times where, uh, actions being proposed by the historical preservation board become before the commission and would be challenging if we have a night like we have tonight where there's only three of us, it's going to be four. So I don't think it would be too good if I was voting on something with one committee that I take action on, and others, I'll confirm to our illustrious representative.
I agree with Mayor, um, about that because members may come before the board and, um, it wouldn't be a conflict of interest unless you've got personal interest in the outcome that your role in serving on the committee and as a commissioner who will be voting on the recommendations or the decision.
Okay. So do we need to see?
If we're ever going to get a start?
Oh, yeah.
Pick somebody.
I normally wouldn't play in on anything, but if, um, Bo Bear is available as an attorney, he may be helpful to navigate through the rather expensive ordinance that we're running down. He may be an asset to the committee, like virtue of being a member of the board.
Monica's.
I can't think of one of them.
Uh, yeah, she lives across the street from, Mayor may not know it, she's the ward up there, she's been asked for it. And she's got, uh, her young, so she's personally old on the school.
Okay.
Uh, Ryan Corvett is, I think, next to the, uh, Monica Bear, is indeed been everything to do with the preservation and operation of the campus, but, uh, that Amy Hasting is a relative newcomer to Lake Butler, that she, uh, is luxury of not working, you know, is ambitious. Uh, uh, Amy Tedman has been in the city for, I think she showed up here about September or the, 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 the seventies, early eighties, and, uh, she also is retired and with the, the, the closure of the city at that time. Uh, it's, uh, I, I agree with the city attorney that, oh, that would be a pretty good. And of course, Robert Greer, he was born and raised here, seeing how it's been, his military, whatever else he did, he's coming back and he is a resident of the city, building the grid down there by the lake. Uh, he's, uh, we, we went through, we read the manual that, that, uh, that, uh, he wanted to take the work from the process and get the digestion, yeah. He was still a resident of the board.
Okay. Well, can I call out my name? Well, children, okay, I got, uh, Bo Bear, Monica Bear, Amy Hest, Hest, Robert Greer and Ron Corrie. Uh.
A favor.
A property purchase extension. This is just for information, but the, uh, property that we're trying to put the new whistleblower to the plan on, the grass from extension to, uh, the end of December, and the sellers have agreed to that primarily due to, uh, state making a decision and, uh, zoning board.
Something.
No, it's just.
Okay.
Not much questions? Okay, the next item is Union County Legislature, like legislative delegation hearing. This is just, uh, for information, we had the hearing here, uh, with a senator and representative from Union County, several people, so, so much, they were here. Next item on the agenda is land development regulations regarding travel trailers. Uh, we have a standing crop of, uh, land development regulations that allow for travel trailers being used as primary residences in same city, not, uh, there's been a crop of them that have been showing up and being classified, uh, full-time in a number of areas of downtown and for, we haven't, the city hasn't pursued, federal enforcement hasn't pursued this violation because of the moratorium on addiction. However, the Supreme Court has overturned the moratorium and the time may have come where we decide that we're gonna have to, kind of, force an officer, uh, force compliance with the land development regulation, or if we're gonna introduce an earned moratorium for the sunset rate, um, it's, it's in our, our hand. Uh, I don't know about, that, whether the else on the commission, I don't know, I don't want to bring you that, too. I'm seeing more and more, uh, big move in, not, uh, in some of them, you know, rival companies that, uh, that do, do, ultimately it comes down to, do we want to allow the town to evolve into a big mobile or a big travel trailer park, or do we want to, uh, not sure. It's very emergency to, 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 to,